All right, let me know when you're ready Candy.
All right, let me know when you're ready Candy.
I'm also.
Good evening, it's Tuesday, July 8th of 2025, this is the Stoughton City Council meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call, Clerk Kristin.
Thank you, Jensen. Killison.
Present.
Reeves.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Venu.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Loznak Scanlon.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Thank you, we have ten elders present, Nino and Shurlocky are absent and excused.
All right, thank you, we're certified of compliance with open meeting laws, and I do have a couple people signed up to speak tonight, I have Jean and Filana, who would like to go first? You can come up to the microphone, push the button and the red light will come on, and then you have up to three minutes, and you can just start out by giving us your name and address.
Okay. Hello, Jean Friedy, I've been here before, I enjoyed it. I really appreciate what you people do. We own the property at 417 East Street, we do not live there, but we own the property, we're in the process of renovating it. A little bit of background about myself, I got thirty-five years in the fire services as a career firefighter, I was the chief of operations and safety, I spent twenty-four years in Wisconsin Air Guard, I worked in civil engineering section, I was in charge of fire ground operations and safety, fourteen years as a volunteer, safety officer and as a volunteer, and I'm fire inspector retired. So, and I farmed for thirty-two years, don't ask me why, but anyways. Something that happened shortly after we purchased the property at 417, we started renovating it and we realized that there's a difficulty of entering and exiting East Street, 400 block. So, given my background, I started to look at it and I realized that there's several hazards here. Backing out of the, trying to pull in, trying to back out, trying to go up the street, down the street. I watched a garbage guy, and he's trying to work his way through the street, and then I asked him questions, and I called up Supervisor Public Works, and him and I had a conversation, and he said that there's a great deal of difficulty getting in and out of East Street. So, then I went into a little bit more of this, is taking a look at the street, taking a look at my vehicle, it's twenty feet long, street's twenty-six wide, average vehicle width is sixty-eight feet, so if you've got two vehicles parked on the street, and so it was seventeen feet, that's fourteen feet, you've got twelve feet to operate in. I started thinking about that as far as emergency response, and I go, this is not going to work well. There's only one way in, straight in, you're going to have to back out, it's going to be delayed, and that's how come I got all those publications that I placed in front of you, is to give you a little bit of information about response times. City of Stoughton, and response times, and the population of Stoughton in response time to this area would be approximately ten minutes. That's from the time they get notified to the time they get there and make contact, and it's like, you already start out behind, we don't need any more delays, the emergency has happened. It's happened when, before the call came, and it's happened. So, the response time is one of the utmost important things here. And so then I started looking at this a little bit further, and I said, well, what's the response hazards? And what are we looking at as we come in, is we going to be delayed, the access is going to be delayed, can EMS reach the patient? And I was looking at that, I went, okay, I want to talk to the fire chief. Him and I had a conversation, very nice conversation. He had some of the very same concerns that I'm talking about right here. So, our proposal was that we change it back to no parking on the west side, that would give the eight feet we could take away from the twenty-six, so you've got eighteen feet to operate. Otherwise, you're down to ten.
Okay, thank you. And who would like to go next, anybody else here to speak?
Hi, I didn't really sign up to speak.
Oh, okay.
It says there that I only made a comment on the fact that safety is primary when it comes to our community. I'd lived in this area for almost five decades, and it's a wonderful place to live, and we're concerned about our neighbors. We're concerned that police response, fire response, can get in and do the job that they've dedicated themselves to do. The simple fact that some people find it convenient to park on the street, does that trump the need for safety? We leave the question up to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. All right, and that's all I had signed up to speak for public comment, others will speak when we get to some items. We have communications and presentations, Chief Jenks, you want to go first? You can do it right there, just.
Thank you, I just wanted to announce, and my timing's off a little bit, and I do apologize, word got out earlier this afternoon. Officer Jay Orin has been selected as the school resource officer for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I just want to also thank you guys, I mean, without your support, this wouldn't have happened. I think we'll realize, you know, over the next year, how we will all benefit, not just the school, but the entire community by having Jay in place, really looking forward to it, so. He's excited, I also want to thank Officers Dean, Jolseth, and Stachel, they participated in the process as well, and put a lot of footwork in this before this even became an official process with all the effort they put into visiting the schools and interacting with the students and staff. Without that base being built, I don't think we would be where we're at today, and I'm really looking forward to see how it all goes, and thank you.
Thank you for the update, and I'd also like to thank Dr. Keizer for his leadership on that issue. Those are sometimes challenging conversations to have, but I thought that he led the school board through the process, just as you came to us and made your request, and, you know, the community had plenty of time and opportunity to weigh in on it, so thank you both for that. Other communications, historical fact of Stoughton.
All right, I don't have a deep dive of things this time, but I was going, like I focused a lot on doing the the really old things that the council had done, so I looked at a few of the newer things, or more recent things, so. Starting in nineteen eighty-three, that Alders Rushlow and Offertall reported that there were complaints about people keeping snakes and skunks as pets. Then in nineteen eighty-one, the council approved the purchase of a computer for the utilities department for forty-five thousand dollars. One computer. In nineteen seventy-eight, there was a vote to sell the land, sell some land in the industrial park to Nelson Industries, and then they proceeded to build in that area. In nineteen seventy-two, the council voted to create the detective position at the police department. I'm not sure if that's the first detective, Jenks, do you know that one, or?
I believe it was, and if memory serves me correct, it was Steve Grady.
All right, thanks for the additional bit on there, but yeah, the first detective, nineteen seventy-two. Then in nineteen seventy-one, there was a vote to prohibit liquor licenses to properties within three hundred feet of schools, hospitals, or churches, going off of the last bit that we had with the Wellness Coalition and here in the last meeting. In nineteen sixty-eight, the mayor presented a savings bond to Rudolph Johnson in recognition of his forty-one and a half years of city employment. That's all I have. That's it.
All right, next item is, we have a pre-sale report, so Greg Johnson is here from Ellers. You can come on up and I'll queue it up again, hopefully, there it is. And you can walk us through as quickly or slowly as you can bear it.
Good evening, Greg Johnson from Ellers. The presentation provides a summary of the pre-sale report, and there's a parameters resolution, that's the official action item on your agenda, so I'll give a brief overview of the financing plan. So, page two of the presentation, this is really the high-level summary of kind of what you need to know in terms of the impact of the 2025 financing and future financings that we've built in our model. So, what's being funded with the 2025 debt issuance on your agenda this evening is approximately thirteen thousand seventy, thirteen million seventy-six thousand dollars of project costs. It's, the debt service will be repaid by the debt service levy. The stormwater utility repair will pay their respective share of the debt service, the EMS fund their share, and a portion of the debt attributable to TID-8 will be paid by TID-8 revenues. In the long-range financial model, we've included in the plan, we like to look at debt issuance in a multi-year context. So, for illustration purposes, we included financings from 2026 to 2029, the total thirty-five point one million. The majority of that is supported by the property tax levy, portions of that project costs are related to the stormwater utility. That's for illustration purposes only, no actions being taken on that this evening. Terms of the fiscal impact, the debt service levy, if all those projects were funded over the next five years, the debt service levy would increase approximately a hundred five thousand dollars per year during that five-year planning period. In terms of the stormwater utility, one area we look at when we're looking at other revenue sources to repay debt is if that revenue source seems sufficient going forward. One metric we like to look at for the stormwater utility is the net revenues of the utility, so once you pay all your expenses of the stormwater utility, are those revenues left sufficient to cover the debt? We like that ratio at least to be one point zero or higher, we're kind of right at that level, so that's kind of an indication that might be time to look at stormwater rates if the intention is for the stormwater utility to support their share of debt. And then for TID District number eight, the incremental value of that TID District as of January first of 2024 isn't sufficient to support existing debt that's already outstanding for the district, as well as the proposed debt in these 2025 notes. So, the recommended solution for that will be to amend TID District number seven to allow donations to TID District number eight. I'll briefly summarize the rest of the presentation, page three is just a summary of your existing debt. Total principal and interest payments are on the far-left-hand column. The city budgets other non-levy revenue sources to repay debt, mainly revenue from TIP districts and some of your utilities. Your tax levy for debt service in 2025 was five million three hundred ninety thousand. You'll see that your levy for debt service is projected to go forward, decline going forward, which leaves room for future debt issuance. The next several pages is just the detailed list of project costs included in the 2025 notes. Projects related to fire, EMS, IT, parks and recreation, planning, police, public works, roads, public works facilities, and TID District number eight. So again, the total is thirteen million seventy-six thousand of project cost. On page five, this is just for planning purposes, this is how much we've built into the multi-year debt model, just to plan out debt issuance for the next couple of years, just again for illustration purposes, and just to give you some ideas of kind of where the debt service levy and debt capacity would trend going forward. The total amount that you're borrowing for this year's general projects are on page seven, that's twelve million six hundred five thousand dollars in total. We break down the debt kind of by major department and spending category, which allows us to allocate the debt to the levy and the TID District eight stormwater and EMS funds. The next several pages are just the estimated debt service schedule for the proposed notes. The amortization term of the various projects are tied out to kind of their anticipated useful life. So, the fire and EMS improvements are amortized over ten years, a lot of the other larger infrastructure projects over twenty. Some of the police equipment and other items amortized over ten years. Larger street projects amortized over twenty, and then the stormwater and TID-8 projects are also amortized over twenty years to take into account those revenue sources. On page eleven is the, kind of the tax impact analysis, this kind of brings it all together in terms of the impact of these notes and the proposed future debt issuance for illustration purposes. So, on the far-left-hand side, that's your existing levy for debt service for debt payments already in existence. Then under the proposed debt service in orange, that's all of your proposed debt issuance, the 2025 notes plus the twenty-six through twenty-nine issues for illustration purposes. Shows how much revenue would be needed from TID-8 and the stormwater utility and the EMS fund to pay their respective share of the debt. And then under the gray column to the far-right-hand side, the total levy and tax rate, all debt, it shows your tax levy for debt service going forward, including these future issues for illustration purposes. So again, you'll see that the total levy for debt service would increase by about a hundred five thousand dollars per year if all of these projects were funded going forward beyond 2025. And then 2031, the debt service levy is projected to decrease, which is really the end of our planning model, because we end in 2029, the next issuance would be in 2030, which would hit the levy in 2031, so that's why we built in a decrease to leave room for future debt. I mentioned the stormwater utility coverage, that's shown on page twelve. So, when we take your existing debt, add in the proposed debt in this multi-year model, and take your net revenues for 2024 for the stormwater utility, you'll see that debt coverage ratio in the first couple of years, twenty-five through twenty-seven, is right above one, then it kind of starts to get under one. So, as I said, you know, the recommended minimum coverage ratio is about one point zero. So, you're kind of hovering around that, which is just a high-level indication that a look at stormwater rates may be necessary for them to, that utility to support that. In terms of your legal general obligation debt capacity, that's summarized on page thirteen. That's limited by statute to five percent of your total equalized value, so your general obligation principle cannot exceed that amount. So, at the end of 2024, the city was at forty-nine percent of its debt limit, which left you about, you know, forty-nine million of future borrowing capacity. At the end of 2025, with this proposed debt issuance that's on your agenda this evening, you'd be at about fifty-five percent of your debt limit, leaving about forty-three point eight million of capacity. With the future debt issuance included in the model, you'd be reaching about sixty-six percent at the highest level. One of the debt metrics that the city has in its debt management policy is that your levy and TIP-supported debt payments should not exceed thirty percent of all your operating and debt service fund expenditures. This chart shows that with the future debt issuance included in this model, plus the proposed 2025 notes, you're remaining under that not to exceed thirty percent metric. And then for TID District number eight, just as I mentioned in my opening comment, there's some existing debt outstanding of about nine hundred forty thousand dollars. These notes adds about nine hundred ninety-five thousand of additional debt. There's about three point six million of incremental value in that district presently. That tax increment revenue collected on that value is not sufficient to cover your existing debt and these proposed notes. So, the proposed solution is to amend TID seven to donate excess increment to TID eight. So, the next couple pages kind of summarize the cash flow for TID seven to show if it can support donations to TID eight. It's a conservative projection, no new development is projected in TID seven. It's just if everything remained the same, that that district, you know, support donations to TID District number eight. So, on page seventeen, you'll kind of see highlighted in a box how much revenue is needed to support revenue to TID eight, to help support existing and proposed debt. And then the cash flow projection for TID eight is on page eighteen, shows that, you know, without any additional development in TID eight, which may occur, likely would occur additional development, but there also may need, may need to be additional costs to support that development. But if TID eight stayed the same, TID seven stayed the same, you'd have enough, you'd be in position to close TID eight by 2044. So, the parameters resolution that's on your agenda kind of establishes the process to proceed with the debt issuance for the 2025 projects. Within that resolution are certain financial benchmarks that'll have to be met in order for the sale to be awarded, and there are positions identified in the resolution that can accept the sale results as long as these financial conditions are met. So, the true interest cost for the notes cannot exceed four point four seven percent. That's the interest rate that's included in this analysis, so that means the interest rates and debt service impact cannot be any higher than what was presented to you this evening. There's some other parameters in terms of kind of the bid that we can adjust on the day of sale, but also the borrowing amount cannot exceed the amount that's in the resolution. So, where we are in the debt issuance process, this is kind of the beginning. The parameters resolution, which is your action item on the agenda to proceed with the debt issuance. The city will have its rating call with Moody's anticipated the week of July twenty-eighth. The tentative sale date would be August twelfth. One of the benefits of this parameter sale approach is that we can kind of look at the bond sale activity within the municipal securities market, and try to schedule it on a day where there's less competition to likely increase your number of bidders. So, we're tentatively targeting the twelfth of August, it'll be that week, and then the closing would be on August twenty-eighth, and that's the date that the city will receive all of its funds. So, that's kind of the overview of the proposed financing plan and the kind of the multi-year impact, just for planning purposes.
All right, thank you Greg, are there any questions regarding this, this will be an action item later? Okay, no questions, the next document in here is a pre-sales. Is this scope engagement letter, is there anything you want to cover on that, Director Kabatowski?
Yes, this is just for informational only, this is the bond counsel for a part of the debt transaction. It just lays out their scope of service and fees within there.
Any questions on any of that, this is pretty routine for some, might be new for others. But it's been a good process for us, is to give them the latitude so they can hit the market at the best opportune moment, instead of locking them in on a rate, it gives them more flexibility, so, worked out really well for us. Thank you for being here, I'll queue up the next item here. The next item is related to 431 Glacier Marine, and we have Ron and Kathy Gross are here tonight, and they would like to complete a project they started out there a few years ago. Just give me a moment here, and I'll queue it up. We just have a few slides that we're going to add to the packet, and then we also have a script that I think was emailed out this afternoon that we'll add to the packet as well, in case you didn't get a chance to read it, but they're going to go through that tonight anyway. Okay, and you can just push the red button, the light will come on there, and you can just introduce yourself, and just let me know when you want me to advance the slides.
Ron and Kathy Gross, so, the first property I bought for you in Stoughton, I think it was 2015, and that's the picture of that one right there. That was Business Park Circle, three hundred Business Park Circle, and that one took us, I think, about three years to do, and I think at that time, we got a couple acres from you, I think there were twenty-six thousand an acre or something. We got them up in a good time and got it done. And then in 2020, we bought Glacier 441 from you, and that was the one that's, right, that one there, that's four and a half acres, and at this point, you can't see it, but the seventh building is going up, and we're digging the other one week after next, and that's the last one, I'm doing eight of those. The pond is in, everything else is in, of course, on that one, and we're finishing up those last two for this year, and we are hoping to get the property that's to the east of us, right there, 431 Glacier Marine, and that one will be quite a bit bigger buildings than those are. These buildings are anywhere from, you know, twelve, thirteen hundred square feet to maybe twenty-five hundred square feet. The ones we're building next door, we want to put two, four units in each, but each unit is forty-four hundred square feet each. So, each one has the offices, the bathroom, three overhead doors, and I think we probably got three of the guys there, as the businesses get bigger and bigger, they need bigger spots. So, we're going to ask to build two four units over there. The buildings are fifty-five feet by two hundred and thirty-four feet long, two hundred and thirty-four feet long. Each unit is fifty-five by sixty-six. And part of them has a, what do you call it, a mezzanine, or a second floor over part of the office and that, so they can go up there and storage some stuff up there too. So, that's what I'm looking at right now. And the building we're on right now that we're finishing, I think that one, when we're done, and the mayor should know that, when we're done, that one should be worth about four million, the one we're on right now that we're finishing.
Glacier Marine.
Glacier Marine. And then Business Park Circle, one of that had a value of one point four million, that was a littler spot. And then what we're looking at to do And then what we're looking at to do is that's the one we have right now. We expect that one to be about 2.2 million. But that property to the east, the one we have right now is four and a half acres. The one to the east is up against the pond. And then I have to have my own pond there too. And that's two acres. So that's what we're, that's what we're hoping for. And if there's any other questions, I'll let you, tell me what you need. And I'll be happy to give it to you.
Okay. Thank you. And you might recall, we have an offer to purchase under consideration. And so we asked them to come here tonight and kind of give you an update on where we're at with their current buildings and what they've done in the past. Did you have any questions? Alder Person Hirsch.
I was just curious of who occupies these spaces and how many employees that they have and if you know kind of what their pay wages or whatever like that.
I would not know.
Yeah, some of that unfortunately, I wouldn't know what their pay rates are, their wages are, or exactly how many employees. I know that many of them are established businesses already. Some of them are startups. As far as the types, this is just a general because we have some in Madison. That's what the C and D picture was, are the ones that we have in Madison. So all of those combined, light industrial, a pest control company, two model home stagers, garage door installer, wrestling equipment, online sales, electronic recycling, two cable installers, a food dehydrator, RV restoration, commercial coffee pot repair, couple of flooring guys, several landscapers, that's a big one, a few in construction, two electricians, large equipment repair, a chocolateer, a pizza business storage, a brewery, a towing company, a mason, several remodelers, a painting company, a soda distributor, two lighting technicians, ideal fence, a theater group, window tinting, a photography studio, and a freeze-dried candy maker. And these are like my Madison and the Stoughton ones.
And are all the, it's all occupied? You don't have any vacancies?
I have my, the new one that's on Kip Street, I still have, I still have two vacancies. But we just finished that this month.
But in Stoughton, you don't have a vacancy?
No, it's very rare that I ever have a vacancy.
They're usually gone right away.
And most of the tenants, not all of them, but most of the tenants have been there since their day one. Like when the building was built and they moved in, they're still there.
Like the first one we did on, what was that, 300 Business Park Circle? They moved in 2016. So they're there nine, what is that, nine years now? 10 years?
Deciderie.
Yeah. And the only time, and some of them will move up. When we get a bigger unit, they'll move to the bigger unit. Caliber Coffee is one. He started out at 300 Business Park and moved into Glacier Marine.
Yep, Lang Lightings, another one.
Yeah, Lang Lighting. Well, Lang Lighting, they moved from the front of the building to the bigger ones in the back. So yeah, a lot of them will just move up.
That's why we wanted to build.
Something bigger.
These units that are a lot bigger because I think three of the ones we have already right there would like to move into something bigger.
And we get them from all over. Janesville, Johnson Creek, Edgerton, Cottage Grove, Marshall, Verona, Oregon, Fitchburg. I had a look through everybody's file and see where they were coming from, but their residences are, are not right here. And then we, of course, we have a lot of Stoughton and McFarland folks too. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, so we have an item later on tonight. I don't know, did you want them to stick around or no?
Well, I'm going to wait. I'm going to want, I want to.
If there's a question?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. That takes us to, any other communications from Alders? None. I just wanted to say kind of a big thank you to all the volunteers this weekend. We had two big events. We had the fair and then we had Catfish Music Fest. And, you know, those events can't happen without volunteers. So it was mostly nice this weekend. It was a little hot, a little rainy at times, but overall it was pretty well and had good crowds. So that was good. And then I also wanted to acknowledge the passing of two long time people in Stoughton, Sue Hager from the Food Pantry, and then Rudy Silvall, who served in the state legislature as well as on the city council years ago. I think Rudy's picture is up here in the room somewhere. So I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge that. Okay, we'll move into the consent agenda. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Who was it? Okay. Second by Reeves. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Okay, next item is going to be whole business. We have a few ordinances for a second reading. And the first one is ordinance 14 of 2025. And this is coming from Public Safety. Alder Person Woznick Scanlon.
Good evening. For making me laugh, Sarah. Okay, so this is ordinance number 14, 2025, to amend section 7176, parking prohibited at all times on both sides of the 400 block of East Street. This is to amend to allow parking on both sides of the street. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this as is.
Is there a second?
Tilson, second.
Second by Tilson. Any discussion or anything you want to cover?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend this to allow for parking on the west side or east side of the street only. And that is based on discussions that I've had with Brett from Public Works, from Chief Jenks, and also from Chief Rip. And they're all here and available if anybody has any questions as to why we'd like to reconsider having parking back just on the west side of the street.
Second. Okay, so it's a motion to amend by Woznick Scanlon. A second by Jensen. I just want to make sure we understand the amendment. So you're proposing to allow parking only on one side of the street?
Correct.
Which side?
Either the east or west, but.
You have to pick one.
I'll pick the west.
We can't, we can't allow, the rules don't allow me to have public speak during the deliberations. So the motion would be to?
Allow for parking on the west side of East Street only.
All right, so in effect, the ordinance would say no parking on the east side? Is that how it would be written?
Correct. To allow for parking only on the west side, which means eliminating parking on the east side. So no parking on the east, allow parking on the west.
Okay. Alder Person Reeves.
I'd be interested to know, because I believe the gentleman who spoke suggested, unless I, my notes are wrong, no parking on the west side. But I'd be interested to hear what Chief Rip and Public Works and Police Chief have to say about it because I think their recommendations would be important.
If I may, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just, yeah, just a little background here. I think the resident did a nice job of bringing a lot of these issues up during the public comment period. But this roadway is 26 feet wide. Our typical roadways are 33 feet wide, just to give you some perspective. So that means if a car was parked on either side of the roadway, typically a parking lane would be about eight feet. So eight foot on one side, eight foot on the other side would leave a balance of 10 feet, which is awfully narrow to get various types of apparatus through. So I would certainly recommend to you guys to allow for parking on one side or the other. I would like you to consider allowing parking on the east side for the fact that there's five driveways on the east side of the road and like two on the west side. So I guess my recommendation for you to consider would be to allow parking on the east side of the road and restrict parking out in the west. But certainly happy to answer any questions as you may have.
Anything you want to add, Chief?
No, that was the original recommendation that was given to Public Safety a couple of months ago when we reconvened and invited the neighbors. It's a very close-knit group of neighbors. They showed up. We really, you know, they gave some heartfelt explanations of why they wanted to have parking on both sides. I agree completely with Director Eber. I talked to Chief Rip. Conversations today and last week. And sometimes we just have to make a decision for the good of the order. And I think that original proposal to prohibit parking on one side is more reasonable. As Director Eber mentioned, the street is so narrow. And is Chief Rip on the call?
I didn't see him.
All right. When I talked to Chief Rip, he mentioned there was a fire on East Street. And he remembers, he was one of the first responders there. And there, it was, there was one vehicle parked on the street. And in his example, to me, if another vehicle would have been parked across from it, it would have been just simply too narrow for him to get the trucks through. And that was his concern as well. So my recommendation would be to suggest prohibited parking on the west side so that the residents would still have that opportunity to park on at least one side of the street.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I got something there.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, I guess, Chief, you know, my thought is, is, you know, I am understanding of both sides here. You know, the big group came to the last one. I'd be, I'm thinking we must kick this back then to Public Safety again and post it so that all the neighbors then know about it and everyone can come and kind of voice their opinion and hear it out once more time. This is great data to have, but we did hear a lot of the historical knowledge on that instead of just making a decision tonight. Let them have their voices heard. And then if we have to have that difficult discussion with them about safety for fire engines and ambulances, then they can all be there to have their voices heard in that moment and then kick it back here again. That'd be my, my thought process going forward here. But I don't know, Counsel Christina, if you have any thoughts on that also or we want to make a decision on this tonight?
I'm comfortable moving forward with making a decision. They were invited and made aware of tonight's meeting when we met with them at Public Safety.
I guess I'm just not, we, I don't know. Did we inform them that we were then leaning towards one side only on the street parking? Because we've already had them getting pissy. Excuse my language, I'm a rough veteran.
I know that we mentioned that the next step would be, Counsel would consider it.
Yeah. But as far as all those that showed up, I think they're thinking that we're still going to be letting them park on both sides of the street.
I'm not sure, I guess. Yeah, go to Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, I'm actually going to question why we're, this is second reading when it's, it's basically, it's not, yes, we're amending the proposal that we originally, or the amendment, excuse me. We are amending the ordinance that we originally passed a month ago. And so if that's the reason, I just, I just need more explanation on this. Why are we going second? Why is this not a first reading?
So I think the first part was is we couldn't just simply repeal it, right? Is that kind of what I heard?
We couldn't do a reconsideration right afterwards because it was an ordinance that we needed to have a new ordinance to amend it. Yeah, there should be a first reading then for the ordinance.
But with this being a first reading, they have ample opportunity to express themselves between this meeting and the next meeting. So being a first reading, let it stand.
Yeah, so I guess the procedural question is, is, you know, we have it posted as a second reading. So, you know, what would be the appropriate thing to do? We could, do we act on it? Do we say, no, we shouldn't? Do we postpone it or?
Yeah, I think we should treat this as a first reading even though it's messaged as a second reading. So we treat it as a first reading, bring it back for the next meeting for a second reading. Unless the Council wanted it, send it back to committee. I guess that would be an alternative option.
So then procedurally, I mean, there is a motion on the table. So what do I do with that?
So the rules wouldn't allow for this unless we suspend the rules. So we, we could just make a determination that the motion wasn't permitted by the.
It was out of order?
Correct.
Okay, would we have to take a vote on that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So are you guys okay treating it as a first reading? Then the question would be is you want it to come back as a second reading? And if it does, it'll come back in its form that it started with tonight? Or do you want to send it back to committee?
My personal feeling is I agree with Jordan. I think we probably should go back to the Public Safety and review it and then bring it back as a second reading.
So that means it wouldn't come back here until probably the first meeting in August, which I think the big thing is obviously the sooner the better we can get it resolved. But, you know, as far as the apparatus, one of the major ones is the snowplow. So if we're going to make a change, we'd want to do it before the snow flies. So I don't, is Chair, are you comfortable sending it back to the committee?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do I need to withdraw my?
No.
No.
Okay.
No. Does anybody else have any thoughts though, as long as we're here? Of what you'd like the committee, you want to give them direction? Or you want them to meet and sort it out? Alder Person Hirsch.
When it comes back, I want it to be very clear of which side of the street is going to be allowed parking and which not. And have, you know, some justification behind that as opposed to, you know, we picked a, we like east better than west. Or, I mean, I like Director Eber's, you know, reasoning about the number of houses, but is that actually fair as well? So, you know, are the houses on the right have bigger driveways or the east than the, than the west? I mean, I think there's a lot of other things to be considered as well.
Yeah. And just to add on, there's already been conversations about how to handle these situations going forward to kind of address your point and so everybody kind of understands a process. Because right now, it's like somebody calls or emails and says, hey, I think this is a good idea. We throw it on an agenda. Not everybody knows. So we're looking to maybe change that process, try to get our staff involved as a team ahead of time and make a recommendation before it gets to committee, I think is one of the suggestions. So we are looking at this because parking is a challenge, whether it's on East Street or it's on Main Street. And every action, there's a reaction. And that's what we often see. If we change parking on one side of the street, then the people on the other side aren't happy. Or even people two blocks away aren't happy because it just really affects people's patterns and their habits. So those conversations will take place as well. Anybody else have any thoughts about what you'd like to see the committee do? Okay, so this will go back to the committee and then they'll probably see it in August in some way, shape, or form. We'll move on to the next one, which is also from the Public Safety. And this one's ordinance 18. And I believe this one is the second reading.
This is ordinance 18 of 2025 to amend section.
This is Ordinance 18 of 2025 to amend Section 177, which is no parking from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday on Hillside Street between Main Street and Ridge Street. I so move.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, and do you want to walk us through this one?
Um, yeah, so basically there was a business previously on this street that received deliveries via semi, so parking was prohibited from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The building, or the business is no longer in existence, and the residents of this neighborhood and street would like to be able to park on both sides of the street 24 hours a day.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Reeves?
So, since we're talking about width of the street and fire access and emergency vehicle access, did you all discuss that, and you're comfortable with, you know, the ability for those vehicles to get through?
Yeah, the width of that particular street jumps to 31 feet, and keep in mind, the prohibition was just during the day, so there was that emergency traffic at night where there was parking on both sides.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is Ordinance 25 of 2025. This is the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravelo, second reading.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 25, 2025, approving a general development plan for the area known as 401 South Fifth Street, partial number 281 slash 0511 dash 081 dash 3918 dash 5, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Schumacher, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is for the building at 401 South Fifth Street, which was, I think, originally constructed to be a church, or at some point in its history was a church. Current owner would like to turn it into a two-flat with the intention of one of those being like an Airbnb-type short-term rental, the other unit being a longer-term kind of traditional-type rental situation, and this does not change the zoning, just allows the owner to do what they're looking to do.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Hirsch.
I just want to make sure that on this ordinance, on number, the recital is under number three, it's, we brought this up the last time, and I don't know when you guys actually correct the typos, but again, number three, it's not really part of the Stoughton Riverfront development, and that should be not in there, so I guess I would just make sure that that is eliminated. We discussed that the last time, and I see it's back the same, same with the next one as well.
All right. Thank you for pointing that out.
I did get that changed. I'm not really sure why, what happened there, but I got it changed the following day and then I believe emailed it out, so.
All right, well, we'll make sure it's right. Alder Person Reeves?
Not about this in particular, but I just was curious, do we have any ordinances or information regarding Airbnbs at all in the event that, you know, I know some cities are struggling because they're more and more coming and not necessarily restrictions or clear guidelines, so I was just curious if we had any ordinances related to Airbnb specifically.
We did not. Would you, Rick, would you like to talk about that at all? Because I know it came up at the last meeting.
Yes, so currently there aren't any ordinances. State statute has restricted the ability to regulate short-term rentals. We can impose restrictions for stays that are fewer than six nights, I believe, but anything between seven nights and 30 nights, there's, we are very limited in what we can do, so there may be a window of regulation potentially, but as of right now, there aren't any ordinances on the books, but we could, you know, potentially bring this to a committee. I can't remember what the suggestion was last time, if it was CACP or?
And it sounds like you talked about that at the meeting I missed, so apologies for repeating myself.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is Ordinance 26, and with the updated language, as Alder Person Hirsch suggested. And this one came from the Plan Commission.
And this is 026 of 2025, approving a general development plan for the area known as Stoughton Riverfront Redevelopment Area, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Tilson, Alder Person Caravelo.
And I know that Chris, after last meeting, Chris did send out the Plan Commission agenda that had graphic, there were graphics and plans for this area that I know that folks had asked for because there was some concern that there was not enough information included from last council meeting, so she sent out the information from the Plan Commission, and this is just to get this multifamily residential project one step further along.
Alder Person Hirsch.
Sure. Chris, I appreciate you sending that out last time, which is, I guess, I'm hoping that the packet itself can be amended that incorporates that information, so the public actually has access to that and they understand everything. I mean, I think you and I both are on the same page. We want everything together so people can look at it, and so I guess if this packet can actually include that information that you sent out the last time, that would be great, so the public can actually see it.
Is the developer in the room currently or online?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
Okay. I know that when I spoke with him following, he was, I thought he was going to be sending me an update with just the information being approved at this meeting, because that was a concern, there was a lot of additional information that wasn't part of this approval, and I had asked for it to be taken out. I don't know that I received that. I for some reason thought he was going to be there tonight, but I could follow up with him as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Next item is, we do have a proposal for a juvenile court change from our Stoughton Municipal Court Judge Dirks. He's here tonight, he's going to kind of give us an overview, and I think we can go ahead and do that, and then the city attorney is going to ask some questions of the council of where we want to go with this. Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So yes, I'm Scott Dirks, I'm the City of Stoughton Municipal Court Judge, and I have been since May of last year. I've been practicing law since 1993, although I'm mostly retired right now. From 93 to 2021, I was a prosecutor in the Rock County District Attorney's Office in Janesville, and I handled everything from speeding tickets to homicides, and that included two years as the juvenile court prosecutor. Last year, 2024, which is the most complete information I've got, the municipal court heard about 1,300 cases, and of those, about 150 were cases where a person under the age of 18 was cited for violating a municipal ordinance. The adult cases are by and large traffic matters, so speeding tickets, running a stop sign, something like that. Juvenile cases, on the other hand, are heard on a separate night. Adult cases, I hear the third Wednesday of every month in here, this is my courtroom when you guys aren't using it. The juvenile court until now has always been held the first Wednesday of the month except July and August. The reason we have two separate times is because juvenile court cases are confidential. The proceedings are recorded, but unlike adult court, it's not livestreamed on WSTO. I hear the cases one at a time. When the juveniles are all here, I advise them of their rights and the procedure for what's going to happen, and then we send them out in the hall and call them in one at a time. About half of the cases that I hear involving juveniles are for habitual truancy. The other half are mostly for non-traffic violations like possession of alcohol, possession of tobacco on school grounds, things like that. Almost all of the juvenile cases that I have heard to this point have defendants where it's somebody of high school age. I've had a handful that were maybe middle school age, but nearly all are high school age, and the vast majority of violations occur at the high school. There are a couple of reasons why I'm asking for approval to move juvenile court from this room to the high school, and I guess I should explain parenthetically. Stoughton ordinance says that I must hold all cases in this room unless you give me approval to hold them somewhere else. So the reasons that I'd like to move the juvenile cases to the high school are, first of all, the individual juvenile cases take more time. I would say that each adult case that I hear, we spend two, three minutes on it at most. With the juveniles, it's more complicated, especially the habitual truancies. The, for the last couple of years, we have had a sentencing agreement in juvenile cases whereby, in a nutshell, if the juvenile pleads guilty or no contest to the habitual truancy violation, I find them guilty, I impose a forfeiture of $691. But for every day that they go to school between the date of conviction and the end of the current semester, the amount that they end up owing the court is reduced so that if they don't have any unexcused absences by the end of the semester, they don't owe anything. The conviction stands, but there's no penalty. And I guess I should maybe explain, habitual truancy means that somebody has had five or more unexcused absences in a semester, and when that happens, the high school, and these are almost all high school cases, when that happens, the high school tries to work with the child, with their caregiver, with staff at the high school to develop a plan to improve attendance. You know, what, what's going on? How come you're not coming to school like you're supposed to? So they develop a plan, and then for about two weeks, they monitor attendance, and if attendance doesn't improve, in other words, there are continued unexcused absences, the police department is asked to cite the child for habitual truancy, and they're sent to court. Sending them to me is a last resort. So when they engage in this habitual truancy sentencing agreement, while I have them in court, I, I ask them, what's the problem? How come you're not going to school? And with some kids, it's, oh, they just don't like school. With most of them, what I have found is that there's something going on in their lives that's getting in the way of going to school. Could be chaos in the family at home, could be a mental health issue that isn't being addressed or is inadequately addressed, a physical health issue, a combination of all of those things. What I have started doing in the last several months is I have had Ms. Braun from the Stoughton Area Resource Team in court, and where appropriate, I have ordered the child before they leave the building to make contact with her so that they can set up a meeting, so that they can talk and see if there aren't some resources towards which she could steer the child. I should also add, I've been saying the child because the child is the defendant, but almost all the time, one or more of their caregiver's parents, grandparent comes into court with them, which I consider that a positive sign. The reason that we want to move the cases from here to the high school is twofold. First of all, the amount, the, for the habitual truancy sentencing agreement to work best, we've got to get the kid into court in front of me as soon as their improved attendance plan at school isn't working so that I can get them onto that sentencing agreement with enough time left in the semester so that they've got some incentive to improve their attendance. The way things are set right now, it's not unusual for a child to be referred to court, and then they don't see me for six weeks. Well, you know, it may be by that point that there's only a few weeks left in the semester, and there's not much that we can do for that semester, and the kid has basically lost an opportunity to try to make things better. So in order to get them into court more quickly, what I'd like to do is instead of holding court once a month, hold it perhaps twice in some months and perhaps not at all in some. I don't want to change the total number of times that we have juvenile court, because there are resources involved in that, there are costs involved in that. My bailiff is a police officer, so there could be some overtime involved. The city attorney is present, so there's a cost there. I'm pretty confident that we can do this at the high school without having to incur any more cost to the city, but I do want to be able to get the kids in as quickly as, as we can in order to make this work. In talking about this proposal with the high school staff, I can tell you that the, the staff is very enthusiastic about this. They're extremely supportive. There are a lot of other jurisdictions around the state that also do the same thing, and it's partly because these offenses occur at school, and when we're dealing with kids, I think it makes a lot of sense in some respects to have the adjudication of the offense happen in the school. The school has a room that I think will, will work just fine. We can still do our recording. I don't see any issue with the logistics of the whole thing. The only issue is I have to have approval in some way, shape, or form from the council to do that, not to change the schedule, but to change where I hold court. I do want to leave you with one final thought, and then I'll take any questions you've got. A lot of what motivates me to do this is, as I said, I was in the criminal justice system for almost 30 years, and I was in juvenile court early in my career for two years. I have seen what can happen with the kids that fall through the cracks. When I retired, I had some people on my caseload who had been on my caseload since all of us were in juvenile court, you know, for 20 years, and I don't have a lot of resources to help these kids, but I would like to be able to use what I do have. In theory, these cases could get referred to the District Attorney's Office in Madison. It's not going to happen. They simply don't have the resources in the DA's office to prosecute, and it's not just Madison, that's most DA's offices around the state, so I'm it. So I'll take any questions. So I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Alders? Alder Person Tillson.
Thank you, Mayor. Where in high school are you guys planning on? You said you talked with the principal about this. What area would that be able to be in?
I can't remember the room number, but it's near, excuse me, it's near the central office.
Thank you. Follow-up question?
Sure.
Is the school resource officer then able to act as the bailiff so we don't have to occur overtime?
That's something we're going to have to work out, quite frankly. Well, actually, this is one for me, too.
Yeah.
A potential problem with having the SRO as my bailiff is that the SRO could very well be a witness in a case, and it really wouldn't be appropriate, for several reasons, to have the chief witness in the case serving as the bailiff for the judge, because the bailiff is there to run my courtroom, basically, to help me run my courtroom. To have that person also be a witness is, I think, ethically murky. It looks like, it could look like, the judge and the school and the police department are all on the same side, instead of me being a neutral party trying to decide what should happen in the case.
We had the same type of conversation about the city attorney, I believe, at one point as well.
Right, right. And I guess I should, yeah, to that point, before I took the bench last year, I know that the city attorney was not always present in court for all hearings, whether it was juveniles or adults. And what was happening is, somebody comes in with a speeding ticket, say, and the judge would say, you know, "I'm authorized through a memorandum I have with the city attorney's office to offer you a reduction of so much for your speeding ticket." And I'm uncomfortable with that, because it looks like I'm engaging in plea negotiations with the defendant. And I understand there's some municipalities that are comfortable with that, some municipal judges that are comfortable with that. After 30 years as a prosecutor, I'm not. I don't want it to look like I'm working with the police department, because I'm not. I'm, you know, I'm in between the accused and the accuser. Does that hit the point that we were talking about?
Yeah, it really does, because I think sometimes it's looked as a cost-cutting move, and I think that after talking with you, I feel like we need to make that investment, because if nothing else, it's a bad look, and it's a perception that we really don't want to have, because we want to have a fair and impartial.
Yeah, quite frankly, one of the things that municipal judges are told about where to cite their court hearings is, it shouldn't be in the building where the police department is, which, you know, I am. We've got space restrictions such that that's just not practical. We do, you know, try to segregate the court from the police department as much as we can, but I don't want to make it look like I'm working any closer with the police than that. I mean, we're in the same building.
Yeah, they're good to work for, though, I hear.
Oh, of course.
Okay. Any other questions from Alders? Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you. I have a concern, modest concern, about security. Can you address that?
Well, what's...
You know, the security here is, you have this room, you have the police around, you have a door that can be closed. I'm just wondering, what would be, what can you say about the security of the new building that you're going to be in, or the room that you're going to be in?
Well, it would be in the high school, for starters, and I don't know if you've gone to the high school recently, but you have to be buzzed in...
Yeah.
...to get in there. So there's a measure of security there that, frankly, I don't have here.
No.
But I would have to have a bailiff. So the bailiff is a police officer and would be providing security, not just for me, but for everybody that's involved in the proceedings.
So to follow up, then, it would be basically what you have here?
Yeah, it would be, if anything, like I said, a more secure setup, because it's harder to get into that building, the high school, than to get into this building.
Alder Person Hirsch.
You may have said this already, but I kind of spaced it. Are these hearings going to be after school, so the kids can't be bullied, or people aren't, like, aware that they're going to court? I mean, I'm trying to protect the students...
Yeah, a walk of shame kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't want the students to feel, I mean, they're already probably, something's going on. I don't want them to also be criticized, or people know that they're going to court. And so how is that going to be handled, that the student, the child, is actually protected as well with their reputation and everything, that it's, people aren't going to know that that's where they're going?
Sure. And that is something that we've talked about to a certain degree already. I think part of it can be handled, as I understand it, from just the physical space, the building, or the room that I would use, and the waiting areas. We could also stagger the appearances so that we don't have a gaggle of kids standing One of the, one of the upsides of having court starting at, say, 3:30 in the afternoon, which would be after school, is that the school staff, whose input could be useful, especially for the habitual truancy cases, are still there, they're still working, you know, so the social worker, the school psych, that kind of thing. On the other hand, you know, then it's maybe harder for parents to get there, but they do have Zoom capability in this room, and I guess that's something that they do for conferences with parents during the school day on a fairly regular basis. So we could work with that, but the short answer to your question is, I'm not really sure yet exactly how we would handle when we hold court, because, like I said, there are competing issues involved. And quite honestly, it's maybe one of those things we're just going to kind of figure out as we go along, too. But that issue that you bring up, that's something that, yeah, that was very much in the front of my mind when we started talking about this.
All right. Any other questions? President Schumacher.
I do feel that this is a net positive for that, in being able to remedy the behaviors that you're trying to get after and catch those kids that are falling into the cracks, fallen through the cracks. And like Regina has, that's like exactly what I was thinking about with that, because there's always kids after school kind of wandering about the halls, so if you're at a 3:30, they're pretty smart enough, and they figure that stuff out, and maybe can figure out the patterns of things, and, yeah, I guess I just would, I don't want to see it become a social media thing where they're going to begin to tag people, because they know what's going on.
Right. And I totally agree with that. As I said, I suspect this might be something where we come up with an initial plan and then have to kind of modify the plan a little bit as we go along, see what works and what doesn't.
Maybe disguise the outside with some balloons or something, I don't know.
All right. The other questions or comments? I know the city attorney has been thinking about this one for weeks, if not months.
So I guess if there are other questions or comments, what we would just be looking for is direction, if this is the way that the council wants to go. Like, process-wise, I think what we would do is just have an MOU at the school district, just so, and obviously, the judges had those conversations with them, but just having something in writing saying, "We're allowed to use the space, and we'll have access to it at this time and place." So having an MOU along with the resolution, creating the second court location for juvenile cases. So once that's all worked out, we would bring it back to council for approval, and since I don't think we would need an ordinance amendment, because there's discretion already put into the ordinance, we could just do a resolution, so it wouldn't need a, like, a second reading or anything like that.
If I could make one suggestion on the resolution's wording, I would like it, if, obviously, you all approve, if it were worded in such a way that I can do juvenile court at the high school or here, because I can envision circumstances where, you know, we may want to do it here instead one month or something like that. I know that in September, for the first Wednesday in September, I've got 30-some cases on my docket already. I think there were some underage drinking parties or something. So, yeah, I mean, to try to have all of those kids at the high school in September, I don't know that's such a good idea. But, so, yeah, if you could just give me the flexibility to have court at the high school.
All right. Alder Person Hirsch.
I was also thinking, do you also want the flexibility of, if you find that it's not working, that you can completely move it back here? I mean, again, it's back to the original point, how are we going to keep the kids safe from being bullied? And that's my biggest concern about moving it to the high school. And so, you know, I like the idea that we're getting kids earlier, but I'm also concerned about, like Brett has said, kids figure things out, and if they see a kid that they kind of suspecting moving towards where the court is being heard, there's going to be lots of rumors and ideas.
Yeah, and I guess...
When they come here, it's different.
Yeah, I guess maybe I didn't make this quite as clear as I would have liked. The issue with having court more than the first Wednesday of the month for juveniles is I share this space with the city council. So if I want to use it twice a month, you know, three times a month or four times a month, or on Thursday instead of Wednesday, the room's not available, and you guys get first call. So what initially got me thinking about doing this at the high school was just the space availability. So, but, yeah, I agree with you. If I find that it's not working, we'll do it back here again.
Alder Person Neblin.
I just have one question. What time do you do juvenile court when it's here?
Five o'clock.
Okay.
Right. And, you know, how long it takes varies depending on the number of cases, but it's usually, we're done between 6:00 and 7:00 pretty regularly, rarely, rarely past 7:00.
All you have to do is bring them here for a meeting, and they'll go to class every day. Alder Person Tillson.
Oh, go ahead.
Do you have any instances or examples of other communities in the area that are using the high school for this purpose with success?
Right off the top of my head, I can't think of any in Dane County. I know the municipal judges around the state have a listserv, and I did, when I first started thinking about this a few months ago, I sent out an email, and got quite a few responses. I just, off the top of my head, I can't remember who said, "Yes, we do it," and "It works well," and, you know. I will say, too, different municipalities handle these issues differently. I can't remember which one it was, but one of the judges said that they get a lot of habitual truancy cases for grade school kids. To my mind, that's probably more of a parent issue than a kid issue when they're that age. And we have had parents who get cited for contributing to truancy just for that reason. But, no, off the top of my head, I can't remember anybody in the area, the immediate area, that does this.
But there are other communities in Wisconsin that hold it in high schools.
Oh, yeah, quite a few. Yep, quite a few.
Alder Person Tillson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I can't remember if you said this already or not, is there going to be a cost? Is the school going to charge us to rent to this place if we have court?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, they seem to charge us for everything else, so I'm shocked by that.
No, they, like I said, the principal, the assistant principal that deals with attendance, they were really thrilled at the idea of doing this.
Yeah, for my part, I just really want to thank you for kind of thinking outside the box, because obviously, there's an issue with truancy, and whatever it is we're doing now isn't fixing it. So, you know, maybe this is one of many things that we try to do to help our youth, because we know if they're not in school, they're not going to learn.
Right.
And they're just not really setting themselves up for success, so I commend you for that.
Well, I can't take any credit for the sentencing agreement that incentivizes the kids to go to school. That idea actually came from one of the assistant principals before I was even on the bench. They started about two and a half years ago, I want to say, and he says there has been a marked improvement in attendance since this went into place. So, yeah, it's working to some extent, but also getting the kids plugged in a mental health treatment. That's really important to me.
Yeah, it just feels like, being at the school, there's more resources readily available. When you're up here, it's, I don't know who else joins you other than the bailiff and the clerk.
Well, my clerk, she's here, and the assistant principal, and Ms. Braun.
Yeah.
And we've been getting, I think, some pretty good results so far.
We really have, and it has been more of a restorative justice approach. Oh, sorry.
Come on up, Laura.
I'm inserting myself, but it's been more of a restorative justice approach, and I think that that could be a positive way to look at moving it to the high school, instead of coming to a courthouse where it is very intimidating. Major, like Judge Dirk said, majority of these youth, they're experiencing very complex home dynamics, or very complex mental health or physical health, or something that is contributing to their truancy. Very few are just like, "Yeah, I don't like school." And so moving it to the high school really allows us to, or Judge Dirk's, to be able to get to the reasoning behind it, and allowing the youth an opportunity to correct or to work with the program, such as START or other available programs, to get that case management to get to the root of what's going on, allowing them opportunities to change it, and have that support of the school while doing that, and the support of the community. So I think that was one thing that we talked about. An advantage of moving it to the high schools, it could be viewed as more restorative than punitive, because for most of these kids, the punishment really doesn't fit the root of what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Oh, go ahead.
If the council does decide to approve a resolution and allow that to happen, please keep all the communication lines open, that if you're seeing that it is just absolutely not working, let us know that ahead of time. Otherwise, if it is working, then, say, by next summer, if you wouldn't mind, to do just an update on how you shot the process went.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
All right. So I think, oh, sorry, what we're looking for...
Well, I guess I'm not hearing any objections about this proposal, and so I'm interpreting that as direction to move forward with.
I mean, I would support drafting a resolution and MOU for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Speak freely, however, hold it. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, and that's going to be R94 of 2025. So the next few here are coming from Finance. Alder Person Butler.
Yep, this is R94 of 2025, to amend the 2025 adopted budget for capital projects and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schumacher. Alder Person Butler.
Referring to my notes from this meeting, this is to reconcile changes from what was approved for the 2025 capital projects budget and what's actually being spent.
All right. Director Trebertowski, you want to elaborate?
Yep, preparing for the debt issue, we went through the projects, realizing some are already over budget, some are under, some are not... some are under, some are not going to happen this year, with the biggest portion being the remediation along the riverfront and for TID-8, future development.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one, R-95.
This is R-95 of 2025 to amend the 2025 Capital Improvement CIP Budget for the EMS Water Heater Emergency Purchase and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reese. Alder Person Butler.
This is fairly simple. The existing commercial water heater ceased to be. And we needed to make a purchase to replace it to allow EMS to have hot water, to clean their equipment, clean their shelves, et cetera.
Any questions? Alder Person.
And the funds were just shifted over from a different project, so it's a net zero on it or no fiscal impact.
Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next one is R-96. This might have went through a couple committees, but it landed at Finance.
This is R-96 of 2025 to amend the 2025 Capital Improvement CIP Budget for the Rotary Park Bio retention Pond Conversion Project and enter into an agreement with RNT Vaguely LLC of Monroe, Wisconsin and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hirsch. Alder Person Butler, remember what a dry basin is?
I remember what a dry basin is. I do have to refer to my notes. I didn't memorize it unfortunately. So this is eliminating the existing wet pond and moving to a bio retention pond, kind of a rain garden runoff. As Director Abear mentioned in the Finance meeting, it's more appealing, it's safer, and it is more expensive. So we are, again, moving money from a different under-budget project, which is this part. I have no idea what it means, a hard pipe swale in the industrial park.
We'll leave that for Director Abear. He's just, can't wait to explain all that.
You did a great job, just to fill in the gaps. So, yeah, basically, we are converting, are looking to convert this from a wet basin. And many of you know that there was an incident years ago there. And we are looking to eliminate that risk. We were going to rehab the pond, but we thought we would take this opportunity to look at other options. And the other option was to install a bio retention basin. So essentially, a rain garden with an under-drain that would have plugs of various types, varieties within the basin. And then, basically, it would be dry for most of the time. During heavy rain events, there will be a small amount of water in the basin that will infiltrate into the ground. And then there is a pipe that will relieve any excess water and runs that out of the pond into the, basically to the Yarra. So, yeah, it is a bit more expensive, but in the long run, we do feel it's a better option for this location. It's much safer, of course. We do have maintenance that is being planned for, for these basins and others that are going into the city. So we've taken that into account as well.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item came from CACP, which is R-97. Alder Person Tillison, can you introduce this one?
Yes, Mayor, this is R-97, 2025. Let's see, Resolution on the Building Use Policy Update, whereas the city staff members recommend the update to the City of Stoughton. This is the changing of the City of Stoughton Municipality Building Use Policy and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schumacher. Anything you want to discuss on this, otherwise I can cover it.
I would appreciate if you covered it, Mayor.
All right, so, thank you. So basically, what we wanted to do is, we were going through our billing uses and we had an organization that were using our buildings frequently and it kind of prompted us to take a look at our policy. So a lot of it is cleanup. You can see in the red line version that there were some things that really didn't apply. Certain buildings were included that didn't necessarily need to be because they had their own policies. And then we moved a couple things around. And then kind of the big one is, we always had a government use and a non-government use. Government use would be basically city use of our buildings. We'd get priority and we still do under the proposed building policy. And I was trying to figure out a way to allow more opportunities for groups to use the building, but not have groups that were doing it basically to make money. We were already covered on things like, that are listed here, like no political events, things like that, fundraisers and that. So what I did is I re-categorized the non-government to nonprofits and then put in kind of a definition, a nonprofit, the fact that they had to be able to provide some evidence that they were a nonprofit. Because if they're a for-profit business, they should really be, you know, renting space somewhere. It's the way I look at it, or have their own building, or they could get one of the grocery buildings and conduct their business there if they needed to. So we really tried to clean that up and really kind of emphasize government or nonprofit. A for-profit is not allowed. And then really encourage to be more adult groups, but yet have availability for youth groups under certain conditions, which would typically be at the youth center or if there was, you know, maybe something at the senior center, but not in our, what I'm going to call, offices or, you know, they're meeting rooms, but they're not designed to be party rooms. And, you know, we'd like to create more opportunities for our youth, but really the best place for them to have their events would be at the youth center. I know they take advantage of some churches and some businesses that are kind enough to give them space. And then the rest of it was really just updating. We had some rooms that were no longer available. We had other rooms that we added, so we included them in there. And then basically talked a little bit about the Room Observer and what the expectations would be. And then kind of cleaned up the application process and make it just a little cleaner. I mean, we'd have anything on there for email. And we took the price out there and we just put language in there to pay for the Room Observer because their pay will fluctuate and it'll go up. And I didn't want to have to go and change the policy every time we had a pay increase for Room Observers. So that was the gist of it. I worked really closely with Cindy at the senior center because she gets a lot of requests. We really didn't want it to have, like, standing meetings at these buildings either. That's the other thing. Because we want to provide one-off opportunities and give us availability to run our own programs out there and not have to bump people because they felt like they were entitled because we had it reserved every Wednesday for the year. Well, if something came up at the senior center, we had to have that uncomfortable conversation. And really, if they're having ongoing meetings, they should really find a home for that. And we didn't really feel it was in our buildings. But certainly periodically, that would be appropriate. So that's what we tried to do with this. We ran it through with Cindy. We talked about it leadership and then we spent several months on it at CACP. So you have the red line and the clean version in the packet. So that's basically it. I don't know if there's any questions. Alder Person Reese.
Well, I just, maybe I missed it in the clean version, but I think in the, is the Opera House, does the Opera House have their own? Because it looked like there was something contradictory, like one it said it covered it and one section it said it didn't because they had their own policies. So I just wanted to.
They do have their own policy.
Okay.
So it should not cover the Opera House, the library, the youth center or park facilities because they have their own policies. And I think that was something that was highlighted in what I'm going to call the clean copy. And I did have help too from the committee members, not only their feedback, but one member of the committee in particular actually helped me do some wordsmithing on it, which was very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Alder Person Hirsch.
I just, for the Room Observer, do you want to spell out who that actually can be? Or, I mean, it's not actually clear, but I'm also kind of, I don't know if we want to just be more explicit. I mean.
The Room Observer has always been like somebody the city hired and that's their part-time job. We don't get a lot of requests for our rooms. But if we did, we have people that are on our list that we would call and say, hey, are you available to be a Room Observer that night? So the building manager, so whoever's in charge of the building would work through the application process to help line up that Room Observer. So, yeah, they get paid through payroll, just like everybody else, is my understanding. Any other questions? What's that?
Just capitalization.
Oh, yeah, if you see anything that needs to be cleaned up, feel free to send it to us. I'm not an English major, I'll be the first one. And some of it I even cleaned up, so it was probably better than it was. And even some of the language was kind of old school, so we tried to work on that as well. No further questions? There's a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And then the next one is R-98, and this is coming from Park and Rec. Alder Person Hirsch.
Sure. R-98, 2025, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to execute a contract with MSA Professional Services, Inc. for the STI Gateway East Park Master Plan and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vanal. Alder Person Hirsch.
Sure. We're ready to start thinking about the master plan for the Stoughton Trailers Development Area. And we received three bids. We were most impressed with MSA Professional, even though it was a higher bid than some of the others. But they really spelt out what we were going to get for the money as opposed, one, you know, they have a lot more professionals. They've been working with the city on a number of other projects. One of the other groups, they didn't have as much experience or personnel expertise and they didn't spell out actually what we were going to get for the money. And so we felt they were just going to be adding on things as time went on that was actually going to equal the same amount of money. And so we liked the approach that MSA took. And that's why we went with them. And we're excited to work with them to come up with a really cool new park.
All right, any questions or comments? Just so you know, the master plan is paid for by the impact fees that are collected from the building permits. We have a formula for that. And then the Finance Department works with the Planning Department and the Park and Rec Department to keep track of the money coming in and money coming out on these new parks especially. So it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. But how long do you think this process will take?
I can't remember what was in their plan, but there's a lot of stakeholder meetings and to make sure that we are getting enough input from the community and the people going to be using the park. And obviously, we want to work with STI. And, you know, so it's going to be a lot, it's, I think, at least six months, I would say, to get all the groups and surveys and everybody kind of thinking about it and a number of different scenarios that we can look at. And I'm trying to remember how long it took us for Racetrack Park, but it was at least six months.
It was a while, and Ban Park as well.
Yeah, so I wouldn't suspect anything less than six months. It might be more than, more than that most likely because we end up into the holidays and that always delays everything, so.
Anything from the elders? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Item number 16, R-99, that one came from Finance.
R-99 of 2025, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance and Establishing Parameters for the Sale of Not to Exceed $12,605,000 General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2025-C, and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Schumacher. Alder Person Butler.
This long resolution is the parameters resolution that Greg from Ayler's was referencing earlier in the meeting to authorize the debt issuance.
This got to be the longest resolution ever. Very thorough, that's good. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thanks for being here. Item number 17 and item number 18, we both have an opportunity to go in the closed session as needed. And I'll let the city attorney guide us through that. But we'll start with the offer to purchase for 431 Glacier Moraine. And we talked about this at the last meeting.
Yes, so I believe I went through the offer to purchase, the substantive terms at the last meeting. We do have the option to go into closed session if the council would like or if the council feels that it's required to go into closed session for bargaining reasons to discuss whether it's the purchase price or any of the contingencies. I believe the purchase price was for $60,000 an acre, which would be around $120,000. The major contingency would be for entering into a development agreement within 45 days of acceptance. We have a development agreement that was used for the previous, we'll call it, phase of the project, which would sort of act as a template here where we require them to generate so much tax increment within a certain amount of time. So if the council would like to move forward, I would work with the Finance Director to figure out what that tax increment number would be and bring that back as part of any final development agreement. So if there are any questions or if you all feel like we should go into closed session to discuss this further, maybe we'll wait until after the next item and just do those together. But otherwise, if the council would like to, they could, you could approve it as is right now.
But what I gather is, is if the council approves this, we still have to go through the whole developer's agreement, which will include many things.
Yes, and there's a zoning component to this. Well, I think the conditional use permit was at plan commission or it's going to be at plan commission. So there's a zoning aspect to it. But, yes, if we can't agree on a development agreement, then the transaction would not move forward.
Anybody have any concerns right now or ready to make a motion, want to wait till closed session? What would you like to do? I see somebody reaching over here.
We're looking at going into a closed session for number 18. Because if we are, we can just discuss both then, otherwise.
I mean, we, if we go in a closed session, we have to have a purpose, right? So I don't know.
Yes, if we, if, if we're going to close session on this one, it has to be because you feel it's required to for bargaining reasons. So to maintain some sort of bargaining edge or advantage. So if there are specific terms that you would like to discuss about this offer to purchase in closed session, then a motion would be appropriate and we could do that together with the number 18.
Because it would mostly be like terms and conditions of the offer. It wouldn't even be the building or anything else.
Correct. Correct.
Right?
Correct.
All the person Butler?
I feel it would be appropriate to move, to approve this at this point without having to go into closed session.
All right, is that a motion?
It is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tillison.
Oh, give it to Christina.
Huh? To the highest bidder?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you both for being here tonight. All right. Item 18, amendment agreement for Phase Two of Kettle Park West, and I think I'm going to let the city attorney guide us through this. I've given him my feedback, so I'll let you kind of set the table here and house that zone. And we have Connor here from Forward Development Group as well.
So at the last meeting, we were given direction to approve the amendment to the Phase Two of Kettle Park West subdivision agreement, with basically no reimbursement for land that's dedicated for parkland purposes, and there's no like parkland bank. So the developer was not agreeable to that, so they have proposed an alternative of basically a 75 cents on the dollar for the reimbursement of that parkland that, a lot one, but it's sort of like that area between Kettle Park West and by the pond here, Highway 138. They also would be willing to try to secure the right to additional parkland to the west of Tinasca, Tinasca Park. There's, I don't know if there's a map to show-
Yeah, I'm gonna, I can get my power, have a map. Giving you a sneak preview of my coffee with a mirror Friday. So this is the area here, right?
Right. So they would try to acquire the land to the west of the park, so they don't have that land under contract, there's no immediate plans to develop that land, but they would still try to make a good faith effort to acquire it. If they were able to acquire it, they would dedicate that to the city, and then the city would dedicate or convey back the land that they dedicated as part of this agreement. So like that gray area, I guess, on the map, that is what FDG would be conveying to the city, and the, I think like 1.6 some acres would be for parkland dedication for their multifamily project. And then the remainder would be the area that is sort of uses as parkland bank or reimbursement. So if in two years they don't develop the land to the west of Kettle Park West, so I guess we'll call it Phase Three, we would have to reimburse them 75 cents on the dollar, so it ends up being the base on what the city's parkland dedication fee in lieu of is. So right now, that ends up being about $80,000 an acre, 75% of that would be about $60,000 an acre. So that's what the developer is proposing, and I guess we'd be looking for direction on that, and as the mayor mentioned, Connor is here from FDG, he's certainly able to provide more comments or context or corrections.
I don't think any corrections are needed, that was helpful, so thank you. I think the one thing that, the reason we're back is, we took a lot of feedback, and the main things that we've heard from last time is that the desired parkland is the woods further to the west, and I think so far, working with the Dvoraks to the south, we've been kind of a good mediator in finding solutions with adjacent landowners, so we want to, we can do that again, we think, in this scenario, where we can work out a solution that works for all parties. So this would be an immediate solution that would allow us to release the deed restriction on those lots, so that more homes can be built, in the interim while we're negotiating to find a means to obtain the rights to purchase that property, the wooded area to the west, which is the more desirable parkland essentially, as what it seems from our understanding. If we are unsuccessful in doing so, this discounted value, we think is a good middle ground between saying there's no additional value for that parkland, which is essentially a prairie area now, and where we said full value for the parkland. So that's, we're trying to find a middle ground, so between the benefit of immediately dedicating the parkland in the interim, which could allow a trail connection from 138 up to Tinasca Park, would be an immediate benefit. There's the building of additional homes, as well as this provides the parkland for the multifamily development as well, and that housing opportunity. I think one other thing that I took away from the meeting tonight when Eilers was presenting is that T District Seven is benef, could benefit T District Eight, and that's because there's no additional development costs in T District Seven. That wouldn't be true if the road needed to be extended all the way to Highway 138. So we think that, with over the last couple of months, we've seen benefits of, you know, potential cost savings there, and, you know, we think that this is a good way to keep the development moving forward, where T District has that ability to donate to another district, and we can continue on developing the Phase Three and the adjacent multifamily, and hopefully further west.
All right. Are there any initial questions or thoughts? I mean, I'll give you a few. So when you're looking at developing to the west, you're looking at this area up here, right?
As a starter, yes. I mean, if we're able to negotiate an entire purchase of the property to the south, right now, we're focused on the wooded area, because that's the parkland area, but if opportunity presents, we would be interested in both. But the one to the north is where we have the relationship with that, with that family, but not so much where you've highlighted, but, you know, I didn't have a, any sort of connection with the Dvorak several months ago, and we were able to come to a solution there, so.
So I guess, my question is, I believe in the latest version of the agreement, you're looking at having maybe up to two years to make that transaction occur, and if it doesn't, then at that point, we'd have to settle up on the extra parkland that would be banked? Is that how I read that?
Yes, it would be two years, but we would want to work as quickly as possible, because it wouldn't necessarily benefit us to not receive any value from that parkland for two years, so if we can negotiate terms on the woods, that would allow us to then be able to develop the CSM Lot One, the remaining portion of that.
So then, otherwise, if, let's say, for whatever reason, the market crashed, you couldn't acquire the land, or whatever, the city would have to reimburse you for a portion of that parkland.
Right, a portion of it.
At the rate of, I think you said $60,000 a year?
Uh, $60,000 an acre.
An acre?
Yeah, which, that, we take our fee in lieu of, or, that the city has established, which is about $80,000 an acre, and so 75% of that would be $60,000.
So I'll just be honest, my struggle with that is, typically when we get parkland, it's improved, and you're asking us to value this land in lieu of as if it was improved, and it's not. So that's where I'm struggling with the price per acre. I don't know if you're following that?
Not necessarily, because isn't it raw when it's purchased?
Typically, when we get parkland, it's in the middle of a development, and there's sewer and water going to it.
Okay.
And maybe even electrical, so if we have to put in a shelter or make park improvements, the sewer and water is already there. In this particular area here, there's really nothing there. So if we wanted to do anything more than a trail, like we would in a normal park, we'd have to put infrastructure in to do that. So that's where I'm struggling with the, especially the 80, but even the 60 per acre. I think there might be a better solution to that, but I didn't know if you guys would be open to, you know, that.
I would say the other piece that we could, well, two years also gives us the opportunity to extend Phase Three south, which would bring utility services to that portion of the land, adding some of those serviceability points that you're mentioning. Another way to look at it, as you had mentioned at one point, I believe, would be appraisal value, which we would be saying the appraisal value is equal to what the parkland fee in lieu value is, and that's where they, an appraisal could help with that. So for the sake of moving, moving the agreement forward, that could be a way of tweaking the language slightly to be 75% or an agreed-upon appraised value or something, if we want to just massage it slightly to address your concern there, that you're getting unserviceable parkland or something like that.
Yeah, and based on, you know, conversations, we feel that, you know, the soil there is okay, you know, it's a little bit close to the water, but it's, you know, it's usable. But to what extent, we really don't know, because we haven't engineered it, so, I don't know. Anybody else have any thoughts or comments on it? I mean, that was just kind of my take, is if you wanted to go down that road where, you know, we can move forward and give them an opportunity to try to acquire the other land and with the trees, and then we could swap it later, or, I don't know. Go ahead.
I guess this is a discussion I'd like to have in closed session as opposed to an open session.
Yeah, and the only reason I brought this up is I wanted to at least understand what you might be amenable to and what you're not.
Did my comment about the appraisal help, do you think? Because I think that could be-
It helped me. I don't know if it'll help the others, I'm not the decision maker here, so.
Sure, sure. I think that would be, I mean, and that gives us time as well to, you know, the parkland is dedicated, we have two years to evaluate the appraisal, and in the meantime, work out a solution with the woods, and we're allowing, you know, the homes to be built, which is an important piece, and the multifamily to move forward, so I think if that's, if that's a means to move it forward, and agreed-upon appraisal, or some sort of, not necessarily arbitration or mediation, but allowing us to agree to that, that value via appraisal or other means in the interim could be a good solution.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts or comments? Sounds like we might have a need to go into closed session, but if you have anything for Connor before he goes, now would be the time. All right, I'm not hearing anything. Thanks again for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're gonna have to pick up residence here.
Well, when you're talking about the juveniles needing to come to these events, I'm like, maybe I had too many delinquent days or something. So thanks.
All right. Okay, so at this point, I guess we can, you know, contemplate going into closed session if that's what you want to do, or, you know, you know, what is your desire? All right, who wants to have the honors of reading the language?
I got it.
You got it?
I got it.
All right.
I got you, mayor.
Thank you.
The council may meet in closed session per state statute 1895 LE deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or concluding other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in an open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session. The council may reconvene in an open session to take action on matters discussed in closed session. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the Reeves, and Candy, when you're ready, we'll do a roll call vote.
Tillison?
Yay.
Reeves?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Yes.
Vino?
Aye.
Abel?
Yes.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Glasnak Scanlon?
Present.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hey, we have ten elders in favor.
All right, we'll take a couple minutes, and then we'll go into closed session. Candy, I'm going to get you and Mike together and work on his last name a little bit. How do you pronounce that, Mike?
Vienno.
Vienno?
Yeah, Vienno.
Vienno. Catch that, Candy? Vienno. That's good to remember, because I was struggling too, and I also struggle with Lisas. It feels like there should be a W in your name. Trevitaus? There's no W in there. Well, that could happen. We'll keep our fingers crossed.